All right, at six o'clock. I'm just gonna say this right up front, we've got a lot to get through tonight, so we're not gonna have conversation from the audience in between. We've got a ton together, so I'd like you out of here before midnight. As Mark said, zip that. All right, minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February tenth.
How far is that?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Can you go to the warrant, can you watch it?
I know you two.
What's that?
He said.
Warrant?
Warrant.
I did.
Okay, yeah, everybody did.
I'll make a motion that we approve payroll warrant, warrant eighteen.
Do as much as possible.
In the amount of nine thousand five seventy-nine thirty-nine.
About seven five nine thirty-nine.
What's that?
Yes, nine thousand seven hundred fifty-nine.
Yeah, fifty-nine, I didn't say that.
He said, I thought you said thirty.
Oh, fifty-nine, thirty-nine ten.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant number eighteen, in the amount payable warrant issued, payable warrant number eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine oh nine oh one.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, Brad, right to you. It's been a good day.
Uh, no, not really.
No, I know.
We have the truck back at the garage. Uh, we're gonna dismantle anything and everything that would be assistance to us in the future. As far as pistons and anything that we could salvage off it, we'll take out of it. I've searched, I'm searching around to see if we can beg, borrow, and steal one for about a month here.
Thursday?
I haven't gotten a reply back from a couple of people at this point, but looks like we may be able to come up with something somehow. Other than that, what do you wanna do about this? My, my recommendation would be to, we're gonna replace the truck to have a town meeting sooner than later, because we're gonna wanna get in front of everybody else that's gonna be getting one in July. And that way, we can get our truck long before winter, rather than in the middle of next winter and have to worry about it for a month and a half or so.
Here's a question for you. To get on that list, or to get a jump on that, when is, when, when do you think we'd have to put any money toward that?
I wouldn't think we would have to put money towards it until it would be, you know, ready to be physically here.
Okay.
I don't believe they're gonna, I don't believe any of them would require a down payment of any sort.
So basically, what you're, what we'd be looking for is approval to get it, but the money we wouldn't have to really appropriate until July?
I, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Okay.
I just think we oughta jump on it long before we have an opportunity, because once people start getting their trucks ordered, then, then you end up on the list.
Yep. So we need to have a special town meeting. Carol, how would we work that down?
I make a motion to schedule a special town meeting to address the purchase, uh, to, to address the authorization to order a, a new truck with the payments to be made for the, do I wanna say, the payments to be made only following approval of the June warrant.
Okay.
So, because the town meeting is for authorization, that's what it's for. That's the key. It's authorization to purchase, and it's, I mean, we can flush this out and put, if you want more information about what the truck is, the new plow truck or whatever, but it's, it's a meeting for authorization, and because it's a special town meeting, the information is given to the citizens at the meeting with the specifics given out about why it's necessary now instead of, you know, only in June. Um, it's a lot more give and take, it's more conversational than if we had a written ballot. I mean, you're gonna have a written ballot, you're gonna have a written warrant for them to look at, but the information is a lot more fluid at a special town meeting than it is when someone shows into a ballot, um, voting booth.
So what happens if at the special town meeting, let's say, the people say, yes, go ahead, order this truck, but then in June, they say, no, we're not paying for it?
We'll have to go back for a second vote.
Okay, okay.
Because it will come up, the, the question will come up as to, well, what is the, how, how does the selectment, and how does the select board intend to purchase the truck? And, and it would be, you know, is it gonna be raised and appropriated? Is it from surplus? Is it gonna be, um, a three-year bank loan? What is that gonna be? So those questions will come up at the special town meeting, and we have to be ready to answer those questions.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because you have an article in here for June, so you could read that to them, the article that might be voted.
We would just have to reword the article to say, make the first payment versus, do you want to?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, when she, she just motioned?
Oh, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
I, I missed it, I was in the room, so I missed it.
So we need to set the.
I can re, I can reword it for you, so that you can sustain. I mean, the motion, the, the motion is to schedule the special town meeting to authorize the ordering of a new town dump truck. And, and then anything else, you know, that any, it can be flushed out, but that's really what it is. It's, it's a motion. Instead of having it casual, we have a motion that says that, you know, this is why we wanna have a special town meeting, to go ahead and schedule it.
Okay, so we have to give how many days' notice for that?
I think it's ten days, but we have to work with Debbie on that, because it's gonna have to be, um, scheduled and posted.
And I'd like to have it on a Saturday.
That's just what I was gonna say.
A Saturday morning, I think that gives the most people the opportunity to come. I'd be people that work all week long, and also, there's always been an argument that elderly people don't come at night because it's dark or whatever, so that might give them a chance to come. Yep, so I've been working at nine, I think if people have plans, it's before they're heading out for the day. So.
So I'm not sure if the seventh is too soon, it might have to be on the fourteenth.
Okay.
If it's the fourteenth, I know for sure that we're with, you know, within the time line.
Right, okay. Brad, can you come up with? You need to be rid of this cold.
Oh, I wish.
Can you come up with an article?
Watching TV in my house yesterday, my plumber was there, and I had it as high as it'll go, and I kept doing this, and he's in the bathroom saying, can you turn that thing down? It's terrible, it's terrible.
Can you come up with an article and get it to us that we can put forth, and we'll try to have it on the fourteenth?
I will.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I'll have it for you for next week, so that you can.
As soon as possible, so that we can flush it out and get it to the people, so we can post it and get this meeting going on.
Could you, Brad, could you also verify, please, that we don't have to put any type of a down payment when you order, order the vehicle?
I, I will inquire from the several dealers that I've been talking to what their payment arrangements would be.
Okay, because I know, you know, we order a new vehicle, they want something down when you order a stuff.
Most of them just require.
Good faith.
A signing of an, a deal.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's what they use as sufficient, just like tobacco.
Yeah.
You know, they just wanna make sure that the town truly does want this thing.
Just, just to be on the safe side, because you know it's gonna, that question's gonna come up.
Absolutely.
Yep, thank you.
And I'll have as much information for that meeting as possible.
That'd be great. Well, the good thing is, I've already got all the financial information, because we had it for the budget, so. We've already got all that. All right, anything else?
No.
No more good news for me today?
No.
Our winter budget's in very good shape.
Well, that's good.
Very, very good shape. I mean, we're, uh, we're still forty-one thousand in the red, so, I mean, uh.
In the red?
In the black.
Black, with the good, the good set?
The good side. Assuming that you said it's good.
Yeah.
We're the good set, forty-one thousand in the good, and we only have really, basically, a month left of the budget, which is a couple of weeks of payroll.
So here's a good one for you, because this looks like we're gonna have quite a storm on Thursday.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, we're down a truck.
We are, currently. The town of Ruppert, I spoke with them, they have a spare. He was having a meeting today with the town manager to see if we could borrow said spare.
Okay.
If not, Mexico has a couple of military trucks that are set up for plowing. I don't know, I've never seen those two, but they may be able to help us out.
Yep.
I've been to several of the other contractors in the area that I knew had a lot of trucks, and they're either broken down, not ready for plowing, or, well, I'm waiting for one, Bim McNeil over in Hartford, he, he and I have been playing phone tag all day.
Okay.
Other than that, there's not very many spares around.
All right, so is, when is Dale supposed to get back to you?
Uh, he was gonna try this afternoon, first thing in the morning, I imagine, so.
Let me know.
I, I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Yep.
And if not, I'll go over to Mexico and see if I can't beg, borrow, and steal a military truck or something.
Yep.
Even if it's something that can lighten our load, I mean, you know, as long as it can plow the roads, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, and those military trucks are all-wheel drive, too.
I'm sorry?
Those trucks are all-wheel drive.
Yeah, so I mean, I would, and they're using them to plow, so I would imagine that something like that would work out for us.
Yep. Okay. All right, so just get that article written, so we can put it forward.
We pick, fix the divots again on Ridge Road. Hopefully, they'll last for a few more weeks.
You did? When did you do that today?
Yes.
Okay, then I went and backed off this morning, so.
Yeah, we did that late this morning.
You did?
Yeah, this morning, when I left, so.
This morning, it was ugly.
Yeah.
This afternoon's a little better.
There's one hole in the metal that you pretty much lost your tire if you hadn't hit it. I was driving on the wrong side of the road.
Come, uh, come springtime, we're gonna have to dig those up and find out why that caved in like that, because there is no culverts that run there.
No.
The road just must be washed out underneath, so.
I noticed the culvert's a dickville road, it's sunk this year, too. The culvert's on a dickville road, it's sunk down, too.
Yeah, this year, it weren't last year, now this year. Kind of bizarre winter this year. Uh, I do have.
You want me to hear an A?
You know what, that'd just be something else in there, I couldn't hear it. I, I did have some good information on the Mary Turner Bridge.
Oh.
The gentleman that did the culvert for us down on East Shore, well, they also do bridges. And I thought, well, might as well get a price from them, too, and, and I was kinda shocked at their price. Twenty-six thousand for a concrete-covered bridge. They'll use our girders. And that'll be a sixteen by, whatever, it's fifty-four feet.
How much money do we have in there right now?
That almost covers it, almost.
Almost.
We have, we have under about twenty-four thousand in there. Was it twenty-four or twenty-three?
Yeah, we have twenty-two in the Mary Turner account, and there's twenty-eight or something in the bridge account.
Can we negotiate with them?
Um, I thought I did pretty good at twenty-six thousand, yeah. But it's a, it's a pinned concrete bridge. And the only thing we'll have to figure out is how much it's gonna cost to put guardrails on it. But it would solve our rotting wood problem over years, and, I mean, it'll outlive all of us.
And that's cheap at a hundred and fifty some days.
Yes, a lot cheaper.
And we've almost got the whole thing anyway. That is good news.
That is good news.
Yeah.
The only thing we gotta check on is the abutments, make sure they're still in good shape, or see if there's something we gotta do there. But those girders aren't gonna go anywhere, not in our lifetime anyways.
Yep. Yep, keep following up on that.
I will.
Move ahead with that, for that price.
Sorry?
Move ahead with that for that price, see what we're gonna do.
Uh, 'cause I could barely buy the timbers for less than that.
Yep.
And it would be three times as long to do it. They could do, they said they could do the entire bridge in probably two days. So, that, that was pretty, you know, they'll just take off the brick beams that are there, so that it can stay open, you know, be closed while they're putting them in, but at the end of the day, they could just, could keep the bridge open.
Yep. Well, that's good, that'll solve one issue.
I'm sorry?
That'll solve one issue.
That would solve one issue at a reasonable price, I thought.
Do they have trucks for sale? Do they have any trucks for sale?
Trucks for sale.
Oh, John, do they have trucks?
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have, anything else for Brad, that they wanna holler over that way?
You better let him know. I'm so sorry. This is terrible. All right.
Does anybody in the audience have anything before he goes? We won't open it up to public for him.
What happened to the truck, Brad? I know Jim saw you today on one of these, there was smoke blowing everywhere.
Yeah. I, it looks like a piston came out one side of the block, and the connecting rod came out the other side of the block. We were taking out the Morrison Motors to have them look at the ejection pump, because it wasn't running right.
So did you make it to Morrison Motor? Did you make it there?
No.
No. It broke down on the side of Route Two over, you know, about halfway between the new bridge and Morrison Motors.
Were you driving?
No, I was following. Someone got oil all over his truck, that piece of parts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, go home.
I messed up.
You told me, thank you.
No. You sit close enough that you can hear me. All right, so that's Brad. So we, should we try to set the date now?
Yeah, let's say the fourteenth.
Okay, and so we have to pull something by what, the seventh?
I don't know if it's seven days or ten days, but it would either be by the fourth or by the sixth. So we need to have it posted next week, anyway.
Okay.
I was gonna look at the M and A manual, but I don't have it here. Do, do you have yours here?
March fourteenth at nine AM. Seven, or seven to ten, I think. Special town meeting goes.
Is he happy?
Yeah, she's over there, or at least I think she is. Light's on.
Can you get me the rubber to find it?
Yeah, well.
You probably know better than I do. I'll look, Tammy.
Yeah.
All right, while she's looking for the date, we can move on.
Okay, so we're seeing, um, March fourteenth at nine AM. Here?
Yeah.
What if we outgrow the rung? Have it outside.
I threatened to do that before.
Yeah. Put a pancake breakfast or something.
You buying?
Yeah.
I'll cook them.
All right, uh, no memo from Debbie tonight. But I believe the payment, the other half of the payment to pay off our loan is, was in tonight, so we are paid back. Um, nothing from the school board. Nothing from Bill. Vic Pickett called to let us know his availability as a moderator in June. And Sally's continually working with Sandy to update the town assessing.
I, I have more.
Oh.
I have more.
You didn't put anything else on there?
That's 'cause I got it, just, just like, like that a couple minutes ago, like right before the meeting.
Okay.
So, um, I had a gentleman come in about that hundred and four dollar check. Um, from the, the name for the.
The homestead.
The homestead. And he had the check, he has checks, luckily, and it gave me all the information that I needed. I, um, I sent a letter to the state with all the people that, um, didn't have the homestead.
Yep.
That we had given the rebates for, whatever abatements for, um, and I sent them, those people, Karen and your son, to make sure that they all are getting, um, the gentleman that came in was, it made no sense. He had somebody, it was a woman that wasn't his, ever had been his wife, just some name that he didn't even know. So he came in and said, you know, what do we do about this? And I got on the phone and I called, and they said, you know, if you're a municipality, hit one, and then it goes to the voicemail, and oh, it's full, sorry, I can't talk to you. So I talked to the regular people. And I said, yeah, that, that one, that one's not working, so I really wanna talk to somebody, 'cause he's here. And they talked to me, and they were really nice. It was like, wow. So, if anybody has any problems with their checks, if they get them, um, the number that's right at the top of the check, you just call them, and, and they're, they're great. You know, they're nice, they're explaining things, it's like, wow, you work for the state. Um, so, so I found out about that, um, that's my goodness.
Okay.
I just thought it was good news.
Anything else?
Uh, never hit the wall.
Okay. Okay, code enforcement officer, uh, Mr. Glover has resigned. So, that leaves, that leaves us in a. Yep. So we need to reach out to, Carol's gonna reach out to, what's his name, do you remember his name yet?
No, I'll have to look it up.
Okay.
My brain's mush.
Yeah. To the person, he came here to do the inspection, when we were doing something in that building, and he did do, said he could do building permits. So even if we can just hire him to do the shore land zoning ones.
And I also wanna contact, um, Weld, maybe you know who their code enforcement officer is in Buckfield, and find out who their code enforcement officer is.
Well, she's retiring, they have to find somebody to.
Okay, so I won't call Weld. The fire marshal's office is listed in the AbcoG article to contact for certified third-party inspectors, that's how we found our prior third-party inspector. We only have about, in the past, anyway, we've only had five to seven shore land zoning, um, permits. The big issue, I, I don't know if it's a big issue, but one issue that would be more difficult to address would be, um, junkyards.
I was just gonna bring that up there.
The, um, because the board has voted not to incorporate the MUBEC requirements into the town policy, the, we do not have to have a code enforcement officer do site inspections or review permits for changes in, um, land use. We don't, no longer call it construction permits, it's land use permits. So the planning board can do the bulk of those, which is about forty a year. They, they, we had two years or three years ago now, assigned them with a responsibility for reviewing it. So, um, the immediacy of it isn't quite as impactful as it would've been if the board had chosen to adopt MUBEC. Nevertheless, I think that the way to approach this is to put an ad in the paper. Well, first of all, I'd like to contact those towns, 'cause if they have someone that's available, it saves us a lot of time and money.
Yep.
In lieu of, um, putting an ad in the paper. If, if we don't, if we can't share a code enforcement officer with one of our Oxford County or Franklin County, I think Franklin County is also an option, towns, then we'll have to put an ad in the paper. And in the meantime, I'll contact the fire marshal's office to get a list of names, of, um, third-party inspectors to do shore land zoning permit stuff. So, and one of the, one of the positive outcomes is the job description for a code enforcement officer for this town is done.
Yep.
We just don't have one.
We don't have one. And, um.
We have a job description.
We have a job description. It's, it's in draft form, because I wanted to have, um, his input on it. Ask Debbie, I asked, I know, I asked Debbie for her input, too, 'cause she's worked with the planning board. And I also gave him, um, he, uh, the draft of the new land use permit form to look at. But, so when he decided not to continue with us, he didn't address either, so, um, but they are ready for consideration.
Could you give a reason?
Yeah.
Yep.
Me.
Combination of Carol and when he came in to, um, see Debbie to sign his papers, so he could be put on the warrant, tonight he came in at one thirty, I believe, and it was too late for him to get paid this week, and it's not what the, it's like, what? All right, so, yep. That's how that goes. So Sandy, could you contact, um, the person who made the complaint about the junkyard, and explain to him what's happened, and
that we're in the process of, um.
We'll, we'll get back to him as soon as we can.
Have you heard a complaint on the other floor?
No, it's not. It's, it's the same house.
I had a book and look at it once up there, for the planning ones.
So is it bad?
Yes.
When I looked at it, yeah, it could be a health hazard, too. Bad time to give it.
Oh, well, there, you're the safety officer.
So.
That's right.
Really can't, this time, you gotta look at it.
Well, then you keep that right out on the front front of your place over there.
Thanks.
Yeah. Well, we're coming back in the spring, we gotta find you some projects.
Yeah, but I know, good book, uh, after when I have a look at it, but at the time, we didn't think too much about it.
Okay.
Anyway.
We'll just let him know, we'll get to it as soon as we can, just explain to him what's happened. Nothing from the animal control officer, no committee, no planning board. No action items. American Red Cross looking for donations, Sandy's gonna send them a letter. Beginning with Habitat, An Approach to Conserving Main's Natural Space for Plants, Animals, and People, oh, for the comprehensive plan, that's why that came up. We have not done anything with the comprehensive plan. Move ahead. All right, applications for homestead. Yeah, we'll go this way.
Looking for a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve Kurt Ellis at two seventy-six Greenwood's Road. Map twenty-three, lot oh-four. For the homestead exemption.
Okay. Set for this upcoming tax, tax year?
Uh, it would, yeah, he didn't apply until January.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, homestead exemption for Daniel J. Vino, map twelve, lot sixty-one, account three eleven, own since twenty fifteen.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? We've got a bunch of abatements.
Those your way and yours your way.
You got half of them.
They were locked on time, so.
Yeah, um, can I just, one thing?
Yep.
The reason why your supplemental and your bill were the same was because it was just a rebilling. It wasn't really a supplemental and an abatement, it was because, um, it was put in wrong. Remember you, you, when you went in?
So they're just going to take that.
So, you, right, so, so it's really just, it's, the bills stayed the same.
Yeah.
It was just a matter of, because we had the homestead exemption put on it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why they were the same, so, I just wanted to let you know.
I have an answer on the special town meeting.
Okay.
Um, it is recommended that the board give notice seven days in advance whenever possible.
Okay, so, so by the sec, it was, maybe by, make sure we've got it out by the sec. And that's plenty of time.
As much time as possible too would be.
Yeah.
Well, as soon as Brad can get it together and get it to, yeah, so that we can tell us to know, but we have to vote on it. We have to vote on the actual article, so it won't be until, we're going to meet next Monday.
We'll come in early. Just have an abbreviated board meeting.
Yeah, just so we can vote on that.
Because the med care one is six o'clock.
Six.
At, in Rumford.
Yep.
Just how low?
Yeah. So yeah, Sandy probably want to make a note of that, but next Monday, post that at the board. So we're going to meet at five thirty?
No, you'll have to meet at five because you'll have to leave here by five thirty.
Okay, Sluckman is going to meet at five for an abbreviated meeting.
At five?
Yep. So that we can attend the med care meeting at six in Rumford. So that we can attend the med care meeting in Rumford at six.
Where in Rumford?
The town hall.
Board of Sluckman, I've had, you've got to be reflective, you know, all the towns show up.
Yeah.
We're invited.
I hope to be here. You know what, it wouldn't break my heart to reschedule Route Canal, so maybe I'll just reschedule. Sorry, I can't make it.
Which is worse, Route Canal?
Oh no, to that meeting.
Okay, just get back to you.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, recommended, you know, from a tax assessor, the aunt Sally, that David for Draplin Childs. For one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents, map twenty-six, lot six B?
Oh, that's thirteen.
Lot, lot B, lot B, account eleven eighty-eight.
It's lot thirteen.
It looks like a B though.
It looks like a B, yeah.
Yeah, it's thirteen.
Lot thirteen. Yeah, account number eleven eighty-eight.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Yep.
It's fine. They have to go in order on this.
Now.
Okay, so I have a supplement tax for Karen Lark and Todd, Todd Vino, map twelve, lot fifty-seven A, five C Cotronee. The supplement bill is for six hundred and six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, tax abatement for Carol Benad. You know, from a tax assessor, for lot twenty-six, lot eighteen, account three. For, yeah, so mile one fifty, one eighty-eight.
It's personal property, right? Is that personal property?
Yeah, business clothes, no longer equipment, or, you know, this is the store.
Yeah. Yeah, it's his personal property.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Um, abatement of personal, of, of property taxes for Wayne and Owen Timberlake, map thirteen, lot sixty-four C, one ninety-one Packard Road. Uh, it was a change in ownership. That didn't reflect in the eighteen, two thousand eighteen tax commitment. Abatement is for nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
Alright, I'll second that. I'll see. All in favor?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, hopes of exemption. For Todd Vino. Map twelve, lot, I think fifty-seventeen.
Yeah.
Account twelve forty-five. No, per order of a tax assessor, the amount of four hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Um, supplement, simple, supplemented tax for Richard and Darlene Marshland. Map thirteen, lot sixty-four C, one ninety-one Packard Road. Reason, um, is because of the, it did not reflect, the ownership did not reflect in the two thousand eighteen tax commitment. Supplemental bill is for nine hundred and fifty-nine forty-six.
Alright, I'll second that, all in favor?
Okay. Yep, that was the exact same one I had done before, same property, but it's supposed to be. Okay, it's the baby, and then, yep, yep, I saw that now.
Is that all of them? I think so. Yes. Alright, we got to sign all those. Alright, Sylvester property. There's, there's interest in that Sylvester property that the town owns, but I think we should put it back out to forbid. Let's get rid of that one. Um, we can just go, we have to, we'll have to put it in the newspaper again, but we're fine to go out. So I guess we have to decide what we want, do we want to do? I just like to see it go on. So do we, do we want to put a minimum bid on it, do we want? It's not accruing taxes anymore, that hasn't been.
Yeah, last time it went out to bid, we didn't give any, any bidders on it, nobody wanted it.
Well, we have somebody that's interested now, so.
At different times. Do you have to go back out?
I think we have, yeah, legally, legally, we have to open it back up to the public. Yeah, because that was my question.
Sounds like a waste of money.
Well.
A lot of, a lot of the laws that, that the legislature passed cost us money.
Wow. So do we want a minimum bid on that of a certain amount, or are we just going to say highest bidder takes it? Yep. Highest bidder.
I just get it, get it out of my head because it's going to cost us money here shortly if we don't get it.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I'll get with Debbie and we'll get that out, okay? Alright, warrant articles. So we need to vote on each of the articles and then give our recommendations, and I gave you each a copy of the articles, and I just gave my cell phone some now. Do you have an extra copy? Alright, so, when we left here the last time, we thought that we were all set with LD one. And we are not. Um, we still are in a semi-state of confusion as to what, what exactly can go into the deduction line on the LD one doc. We know what LD one is, it's just a matter of how much we're going over it. Um, so this line B, this year's total deductions. Debbie and I. Debbie and I believe it's two hundred and fifty-two thousand, Dawn seems to think it's more, so. Debbie and I have got another email into MMA. But regardless, if, if, if it's, this number is more, it'll make it less that we go over. So knowing this number right here. I had Debbie and I plugged it into the tax rate calculator to see how that affected taxes. And it doesn't change, our, our mill rate would fall the same place it did this year, so it doesn't raise the mill rate. So that was my concern, I did not want to see the mill rate go up. So knowing that we're going over possibly about that much.
Depending on this number.
Correct, if this is higher indeed, then we.
It'll last.
Would be, would be less. So worst case scenario. Last year, okay, this is this year's, I spent a lot of time here, this one. Okay, minimum, last year, or this year, when we just committed taxes. When we set the mill rate, the lowest we could go was point zero one nine four four eight. With the numbers that we, putting in what we'd like to put in for this year for warrant articles, it would be point zero one nine nine four one. Seven tenths of a.
Where does this number come from?
Well, that is the problem.
That's the question.
That's the question, because, and the more I understand about it, this. Right. I, we've spoke to the town of Rumford people, we've spoke, Tammy and I have been working on this for days. And Dawn spent a lot of time and it's just, and, and the problem is what goes into that number. Dawn seems to think we can pull some other things that Debbie says we can't. So we're asking, and there's people at Maine Revenue Services said, they didn't even know. Pretty good, huh, because they're the ones that said it. So they tell us, they told us to go to MMA, there's only one person at MMA that knows anything about it, her name's Kate DeFour. And she's the one we've been trying to talk to, so Debbie and I just shot off another email to her tonight. Because we want to know if we include the surplus that we're taking out to offset taxes into that number. If we do, that's going to skyrocket up to five hundred thousand, that's going to take another two hundred and fifty. But even if we don't, we still fall well in between what we had this year. So I'm comfortable going forward with what we have. If it had said, when we plugged it in, if it said, you know, we're going to raise the taxes two mils or even one mil, I would have said, okay, we're going to make hats, but it's not. So I say, oh, they had, and we're going to get this ironed out so we know next year exactly what goes into that number. I never understood this form, Vera always just filled it out and gave it to us. I've never looked at it, I understand it now, I've spent a lot of time looking at it, so.
I'm trying to.
Yeah. Tammy and I were going back and forth all weekend, I'd say, Tammy, no, we're good, then an hour or so later, I'd say, Tammy, no, we're not, then again, yep, I think we're good, so. So that's where we're at, I'm expecting an email tomorrow to tell us what exactly goes into that. Because the way we understand that these numbers are generated completely off of the warrant that we're trying to put forward in June. So this first number is anything that we're going to raise and appropriate except for Oxford County tax, because that falls somewhere else on, through the lines of that by itself. And the school has its own line.
The school, yeah.
So this line right here, from what I understand, is money that is used. Something about state revenue on that line. And that's why I'm confused as to what exactly goes in there. Supposedly every number that is consistent here, it's on our warrant. So.
So they don't have instructions on.
No. Yep, no.
You can Google it, but it just tells you, I mean, it gives you a basic, a basic breakdown.
Right, I read it.
Yeah, but then it, did you go, you go to that link and then that link tells you it's not available anymore.
Yep.
So. Just because I was trying to understand it.
Well, that's what I said, you could plug anything.
That's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah, exactly, so, I, I'm at least comfortable saying, we aren't raising the mill rate by going forward with what we have, we'll have no control. Are you supposed to answer that?
No.
Okay. We all have no control over the school, but I know we're not raising it, so that's where we're at with that. I just wanted to be transparent with that, because when we left last time, it looked like we were all set. Alright, so we're going to need a motion on every single one of these articles and then we have to make recommendations.
Well, article one, I make a motion, it says to see that, if the town will vote to approve using the overlay account to cover abatements and refunds.
I'll second that.
Do, do we make a recommendation in the same motion?
No.
We're going to have two separate motions.
Sandy, I'll end up giving you a copy of these.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I second the motion.
Alright, all in favor?
I'll make a motion, the board recommends yes on article one.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Article two, I make a motion, it, it reads to see if the town will vote to raise and incorporate forty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. And to authorize the select board to expend any receipts for the maintenance and operations of the fire department.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on article two.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars for the purchase of twenty-one self-contained breather, breathing apparatus, air bottles to replace expired bottles.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
And I recommend, the board recommends yes on article three.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two thousand dollars and to authorize the select board to expend any receipts as needed for general assistance, twenty nineteen and twenty. Twenty nineteen and twenty raised two thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And I'll make a recommendation, the board recommends yes.
I'll second it. All in favor? Alright, we're down to the next one.
Yeah, the folder.
Yeah.
Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars for the town clerk to tax collector treasurer office.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I recommend, I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on Article five.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifty-eight thousand one thirty-two for town office and appointed officials. Twenty nineteen and twenty raised thirty-nine thousand five hundred eighty.
I'll second that. Any discussion? You have discussion?
No.
All in favor? So we're on there.
All in favor?
We did that, you're gonna make a recommendation?
Recommendation, I make a recommendation, yes.
Next, you were all voted on, I guess.
Any vote on that recommendation?
Oh yeah, all in favor?
Who seconded it?
Tammy.
I did.
Hold on.
Alright.
I make a motion that we approve Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and to authorize the select board to expend any receipts as needed for the town operations, town office operations.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And I make a motion that the board recommends yes on Article seven.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty-four thousand nine hundred, and authorize the select board to expend any receipts as needed for general expenses. Twenty nineteen and twenty raised thirty-eight thou, thirty-five thousand eight hundred.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
That was Linda, right?
Carol.
I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on Article eight.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And if you see any word in any of these that needs to be changed as we're going along, speak up, cuz we can change it as we go.
Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four thousand five hundred dollars for care and maintenance in cemeteries and address, and if rural reform is working. New maintenance standards, public law, twenty thirteen C, five twenty-four amended MRSA, subsection eleven oh one, eleven oh one A, and eleven oh one B, and to authorize the select board to spend any receipt as needed, hold in the balance.
I'll second it. All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on Article nine.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Debbie, go ahead.
Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate two thousand for flags and grave markers, and to authorize the select board to expend any receipts as needed, and to hold the balance.
Second. All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on Article ten.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars to authorize the select board to expend receipts as needed for the operation of the road department. Nineteen and twenty raised two hundred and fifty-nine thousand six sixty-one.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article eleven.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Article four, to see if the town will vote to finance a purchase of new dump truck with hydraulics, front power.
Okay, this one, this is the.
They've got changes.
Yeah, this is the one that we need to do something different with.
Right.
I say that we go ahead though and make a motion to appropriate for now.
Well, shouldn't we?
Because the funding board is gonna be in this warrant.
Yeah.
Right, but, but we don't wanna say vote to finance, don't we wanna say make the first payment of?
We still have to finance it.
Still financing. We still gotta finance it, right, little bomb.
This is for raise and appropriate the fifty-eight thousand.
For the first, yeah, for the first of three payments, okay.
I, I think the wording is fine.
Okay.
Want me to finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do it, to see if the town will vote to finance a purchase of a new dump truck with hydraulics, front power angle plow, weight plow, and all season six, eight-year dump body, and it costs no exceed a hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, included financing, and to raise and appropriate fifty-eight thousand five twenty-eight for the first of three payments.
Eight twenty-five. Okay, I'll second that. Vote to, because this is making it sound like it's another truck in addition to the one that we're going to the special town meeting for. So that's gonna make it look like two trucks. That's how I see that. To see if the town will vote to fin, cuz we're asking them if we, they're voting to finance the purchase. Well, when we go to, out to the special meeting in March.
We're asked to authorize it to audit, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Alright, you made your motion. Can we get a second? Yes, or discussion, okay, alright, alright, I'm fine, move on.
No, we have to vote.
Oh, all in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article twelve.
I'll second that.
Oh, yeah.
On that, you just asked about the article?
Quickly, cuz everybody else looks a zip tonight.
I, I'm sorry, I gave it late.
Yeah.
Nope, um, shouldn't the article, I mean, it's for, it's just for a special meeting, so it shouldn't be actually part of this budgetary.
Well, what's, what's happening is we're having the special meet, cuz you weren't here, we're having the special meeting for the people to approve him to go ahead and order the truck, because he's afraid if we wait until July, it's gonna be months, like into the wintertime next year before we get it, so he'd like to get in on the list to order it now, but we won't need the money until probably.
Oh, into that budget?
Correct.
Right.
We're not looking at taking any money from anywhere until the new budget year.
And I'm sure that the make and model of the truck and where it's gonna be purchased is already been.
No, it's up in the year.
No, we haven't figured.
So how do they know, how do you know that's gonna cost that much?
It's up to.
It's up to.
Well, the town backhoe that they just purchased, didn't that go up the amount that we just approved, so shouldn't there be some leeway?
Well, the le, well.
It was, it's over three thousand dollars of the approved amount.
This right here is the very high end of anything he was looking at, we're looking at something hopefully about ten thousand less than what he's asking for.
So, but he must have gotten some kinda figures from different outfits, is what I'm saying, like if it's an international dump truck, if it's a Sterling, if it's
Or a Mack.
Or a Ford, or whatever, shouldn't it state?
No, we don't wanna tie him.
I'm just asking.
We don't wanna tie him into a certain vehicle. We did do that with the backhoe, and we don't wanna do.
Well, no, you did it for the backhoe, you did it either case or idea.
He's, he's putting an article together for us.
No, I was just asking.
No, he's putting an art, he'll have an article together hopefully this week with more specific information that we can put forth for the special town meeting, and then
So shouldn't this, so shouldn't this article, again, shouldn't this one be tabled until, no?
We're gonna.
Because this is the money that we're gonna spend.
We're gonna point it out there, it's all in July.
Well, we're not actually spending money in March, see, that's the thing, and that's why I think I'm a little muddled up about it, and I'm thinking the wording needs to be changed.
Oh, well, I, well, you're gonna, you're gonna iron out the wrinkles on the.
Correct.
Right.
So, I guess.
Why don't, why doesn't it just say, though, to see if the town will vote to finance instead of purchase, order?
And maybe if we took purchase out, I'd feel better.
Ordered.
To finance the ordered dump truck.
Well, yeah, something to that, not that exact wording, but something in that.
Yeah.
To save, to save money and time, you know, I, I guess for ordering, I guess, I don't know.
I mean.
You could put the word on.
Let's just, for the money, I mean, the truck is already gonna be on in the time we get to vote on this in June.
Right, right, that, that's why we're on the special meeting, right?
To see if the town will vote to finance the previously authorized per, purchase. Previously authorized.
At the town meeting.
Previously authorized dump truck, there, that makes me feel a little better. I do, cuz I felt like it looked like we were trying to buy two trucks.
Larry's having it.
Yeah. Alright.
You feel better?
I do feel better, okay, so we made the recommendation on that yet, or no? Sandy, did we make a recommendation on that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so let's move on, we didn't vote, alright, all in favor?
And I recommend that we, recommend yes on Article twelve.
We already.
That's what we just did.
Oh, I thought we both, you didn't vote on it?
Yeah, we did, we had already voted on that.
You said, Linda, Linda made it, you said you did it.
Let's get back on track. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars, and to authorize the select board to spend receipts as needed for operations of their facilities, maintenance and operation. Uh, twenty, uh, twenty nineteen and twenty raised fifteen thousand.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
My answer.
Yep.
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article thirteen.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate forty thousand for the second of three payments on the new backhoe.
Second. All in favor?
And I reckon, and I make a motion that the board recommends yes on Article fourteen.
Second. All in favor?
Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred dollars, and to authorize the select board to expend any receipts as needed for storm removal and sanding, twenty nineteen and twenty raised a hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine seventy-four.
I'll second it. All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article fifteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor? My turn, yeah.
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate sixty-seven thousand, and to authorize the select board to expend any receipts as needed to reconstruct and pave Dick Vale Road from Dowbrook Road to the gravel portion. This would include boulder removal, reclaim.
Reclamation.
Just sounded weird, of the current row, new culbits, new gravel base, and gravel co-pavement of two and a half inches after compaction.
I will second that one.
All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article sixteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to approve the road department to salvage all scrap metals resulting from repairs to town equipment. The proceeds will be received and receipted by the clerk's office and will be used to replace broken tools and to purchase tools needed for the road department at the discretion of the road commissioner.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article seventeen.
Second. All in favor?
Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise, ah, yeah, here we go again, to see if the town will authorize the select board to spend the local roads assistance program funds for road construction and rehabilitation, thirty-five thousand five hundred plus or minus.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on Article eighteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I was wording a little cockled here. I just wanted to make sure she was okay. Uh, Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars for med care ambulance service.
I'll second that.
I, all in favor?
We have a choice, I guess.
Well, not until we go to that other meeting and see what they've got to say.
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on Article nineteen.
Second. All in favor?
Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate ninety-eight thousand twenty-two dollars for the Northern Oxford Regional Solid Waste Operations.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And I recommend, uh, I make a motion, recommend the board recommend yes.
All in favor, oops. I'll second that, all in, all in favor? Too many of these right in a row.
Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate, appropriate a hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for the Oxford County tax.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I still think that shouldn't be on there, we don't have any choice as a town, but to pay that, just like the school, and MMA doesn't recommend that that be on warrant.
And they would be able to.
It's online, yeah.
I'm sorry, Debbie did it.
Uh, I think we just voted.
I know.
No, we didn't, you made the motion.
You made the motion.
Oh, yeah, I thought it was.
Did you second that?
I did.
Alright, all in favor?
But, does it need to be on there?
No, it does not need to be on there.
But we have to pay it anyway.
Right.
Sometimes we do, I don't can't, I don't think.
Some don't, but I think.
We can.
If we have to go back and look what it was.
So you don't have to put the school budget on it then?
The school budget's not on there.
You don't have to.
Because it's, we have paid.
Yeah. I don't know, what's the one one to do, they wanna take it off, I think that's, that's the only, that, I think that sometimes is the only way people know how much they're paying. Truly, I mean, truly, though, I mean.
Yeah, we are, I think we are legal.
Yeah, and I think, and it does make a statement when everybody votes it down. Yeah, makes, makes me chuckle at least, that everybody's there now, I mean.
So where are we at with this?
Alright.
We need to vote.
All in favor? Alright, select boards recommends what?
I make a motion, select board recommends yes on Article twenty-one.
All in, oh, second, all in favor? Well, your hand's going up, isn't it?
Twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one thousand dollars for the maintenance and operation of the work department spring. Twenty nineteen and twenty raised one thousand.
Second. Carol, all in favor?
And I reckon. And I recommend, and I make a motion to recommend yes on article twenty-two.
Second, all in favor?
Twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to take fifteen hundred dollars for boat excise tax to help the Worthy Pond Association defray the cost associated with Worthy Pond water deficit and courtesy boat inspections, twenty nineteen and twenty use fifteen hundred dollars for the boat excise tax.
I'll second it, all in favor? I make a motion, select board recommends yes on article twenty-three.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
One thing I noticed the other day, I was down here, they blocked the boat ramp off so nobody should drive onto the pond this year, now they have a good idea, now they didn't, who did?
Somebody did it buckle.
Huh?
Someone did it buckle.
Oh, it looks like they stepped over it, well, that's a good deterrent, keep them driving on.
It'd be an expense to fix it from the state, but.
From the state, oh, I did.
Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two thousand to support recreational opportunities for the citizens of the town.
Second, all in favor?
And I, and I make a motion recommend yes on article twenty-four.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Twenty-five, to see if the town will raise and appropriate fifteen hundred dollars for the sport of the London Memorial Librarian Dixiel, twenty nineteen and twenty raise fifteen hundred.
Second, all in favor?
And I make a motion that board recommend yes on article twenty-five.
I'll second that, all in favor?
To see if the town will vote to take two hundred and fifty thousand from excise tax and two hundred thousand dollars to surplus to reduce the twenty nineteen and twenty commitment, twenty nineteen and twenty took two hundred and fifty thousand from excise tax and two hundred thousand to surplus.
I'll second that.
Should, should that reduce the commitment, is that the right?
No, thank you. It's twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Did you second it, Raquel?
Yep.
All in favor? I make a motion, select board recommend yes on article twenty-six.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate forty thou- uh, four thousand to continue the preservation of the town records holding files. I'll second that, all in favor?
I recommend, I make a motion, board recommend yes on twenty.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
That one's twenty-eight, though you might be, oh, wait, you're writing them down.
Yeah.
But that's all real.
You said twenty-eight, I was writing twenty-seven.
There is no twenty-seven.
There's no twenty-seven.
Won't you look at that, yep, that's twenty-seven.
I turned the page, so, it was like article twenty, okay.
We jumped from thirty-three to thirty-six on the next.
Then how's someone go to thirty-six?
Listen, don't shoot the secretary over here, she's been doing the best she can.
Don't go over there, okay.
That's why we're going over there, so I can make these changes.
We're on twenty-eight, twenty-seven.
We just did twenty-seven.
We have done that, right? Okay, article twenty-nine.
Did you make a recommendation, I'm sorry? Okay, hold on a second now, because we're messed up, so article twenty-seven was about the town record books, okay, okay, Sandy, did you make the recommendation and vote on it?
Uh, we already recommended yes, to me, second, all in favor.
Okay, all right, so twenty-eight is the next one.
Right.
Okay.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to sell dispose of, or lease by bid, any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes, thereon, if they execute quitclaim deeds for such property, except that municipal offices shall use a special sale process required by thirty-six MRS nine four three D C for qualified homestead property if they choose to sell to anyone other than the former owners.
I'll second that, all in favor?
And I recommend, I, I make a motion to recommend yes on twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All right, so this one's twenty-nine. Um, twenty-nine, shall the town set the due dates for taxes to be Friday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and Friday, September, February twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize tax collector to accept prepayments of taxes pursuant to the title thirty-six, article five oh six. Is that question mark, you could be there?
Yeah, because that's phrases, a question, shall the town set the due dates?
I make a motion that the.
Wait, 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 have you voted? Yeah, all in favor? Yes, sir. Now go ahead, reasoning.
I recommend that, yeah, recommend yes on article twenty-eight.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor? Twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
That's twenty-nine. Article thirty, to see if the town will charge six percent interest rate on taxes not paid by the due dates.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I make a motion, select board recommend yes on article thirty. I'll second that, all in favor?
Thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to accept receipts, revenues from the deposit of inland fishes and wildlife and disperse those monies to the personal bill call.
Second, all in favor?
And I make a motion, select board recommend yes.
Second, all in favor?
Thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to accept a donation, all donations to supplement a specific operation already, I mean appropriation, already made to reduce the tax assessment or to reduce the permanent debt.
Second, all in favor?
I make a motion that the select board recommend yes on article thirty-two. I'll second that, all in favor?
That was thirty-two, right?
Yep, so this one's not.
It's be thirty-three, yeah. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to receive the property tax levy limit of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred, yeah, and sixty-three dollars, established for the town approved a state law in event that the municipal budget approved under the receiving articles, June eleventh, whether in the vote, will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit of twenty nineteen twenty-four.
That number's gotta change, yeah, that's good, that number's gonna change. The nineteen twenty? Yeah, well, no, nineteen twenty actually isn't gonna change, no, never mind, it's gonna stay the same. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But is the, is the tax levy limit? No, that number doesn't change, that does not change.
Nope.
That's that number, that number stays.
So I'm missing them, no.
I'll second that, is that what we're looking for? Yeah, all in favor? I make a motion that the select board recommends yes on article thirty-three. I'll second that, all in favor?
Can I ask you for the two figures on that article again?
Yep, the, to see if the town will vote to exceed the property tax levy limit of five hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars, and then last year it was four hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. Sandy, when I go in and make those few corrections, I'll let you know, because you can pull everything you need for the minutes right off of that document that we've got online, so I'll fix it tomorrow or tonight, I'll let you know. Gail, you want a copy of this?
I have the one from last week, but.
It's, you better take this one.
I will.
Yeah.
Good, can I have that tonight?
Yep.
We have a couple of questions about the all of them on the.
Yep, there you go. So the one last week that we all marked, we marked up, that's not. I've just gone and you got a change.
Yeah. So thirty-three was the last one?
Yes.
Okay. I, I thought I heard thirty-six.
It went from thirty-three and then jumped to thirty-six.
What are you handing it up for?
Is it time?
Oh, is it public participation, is that what you've been waiting this whole time for? Ah, well, hold on, just about, hold on, I've lost my agenda somewhere amongst this, all right. Tammy, anything to add, old or new? You?
Me either, tonight. Down on the ordinance, on the policy.
The marijuana policy, you need to vote.
No, no, it's, it's a prohibiting smoking, it's prohibiting tobacco and marijuana use.
Right, this one, okay.
And it doesn't have to be tonight, it can be next week, or.
Well, we're only at a meeting next week, so, we're ready, unless there's lots of discussion about it. Well, I think Tammy was the, had brought up.
I just have an issue with the last line in the tobacco. In the tobacco use.
And that's, and that language is recommended by MMA, that's where it came from, and it makes sense in that if the town is voting to prohibit tobacco and marijuana use, that if an individual is using their personal vehicle for town business, that they not be allowed to utilize those substances on town when they're being paid by the town.
Well, I totally agree with that on the marijuana section, but on, on the tobacco piece, I just, sounds to me like it's going a little bit over the edge to say, if you're driving to Morrison's to pick up a part in your own personal vehicle, that you're not allowed to smoke in that vehicle. Obviously, you're not allowed to use marijuana during the workday, you're always, it's legal to use it in your household, but not in public, so, that, that's the only piece I have, I think it's just going a little far saying, because it's three o'clock in the afternoon and you don't get off work till four, you can't have a cigarette in your own vehicle, and I don't even smoke, I'm just, I'm just saying, it, it just sounds, just, that was the only piece that I had to, an issue there. I agree with the, with it in the marijuana, when, where it says, even in your personal vehicle during the time that you're conducting municipal business.
Right.
Because you're not supposed to be using it anyway.
If they got CBL licenses, they're not supposed to use it in their vehicles.
That was my issue.
Do you have a copy of that available?
Yeah, no, we're just considering it now.
I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, I gotta agree with Tammy, when I read that, I think it's going a little bit too far, you know, if they can't smoke, you know, that's their own personal vehicle.
Except that, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead, Larry.
No, it's their own personal vehicle, and if they smoke, I believe they have the right to smoke in it.
If it's not on town property, if, if they're going to the store, like you said, and they're gonna pick something up, and it's not on town property, that's one thing, if they're smoking in their car and it's on town property, we're prohibiting the use of tobacco, and, and so how do you, how, how do you divide that?
Oh, that's different, now that's different.
That's not how I read that.
All right, now that's, now that's different, Carol, on, on town property, yes, I agree with that, because at West Bay Transportation, you could not smoke in your own vehicle if you were sitting on their property, you had to leave their property, I didn't, I didn't read it that way either.
I, I'm not, I'm not taking it as they're taking a fifteen minute break and then they'll jump in their truck on, at the town garage and smoke in their truck, I'm taking it as it says, and in personal vehicles during the conduct of municipal business, so I take that as they're driving to pick up cars, like, for instance, today, Brad was following the truck up to Morrison's. We're saying to him, if he wanted to have a cigarette while he was driving.
He can't do it, he's being paid by the town, it's on town time. Now, that can come out of there, I, I don't, I don't care, I, I mean, it can be modified, I just think that the consistency, it's just cleaner to have it all the way through. Yeah, and you, you raise a valid point, you know, how do you police that, well, you police it, at least in terms of the employees themselves, you can't, it ma- makes it very hard to police it for the road commissioner or for the clerk, um, but for the employees, you start with oral, you start with, um, um, a counseling, then you go oral, and you go written, and you go suspension, and you have the disciplinary action, but, because one of the people, somebody who read the policy said to me, so, so what, you're putting a policy in place, but so what? And I said, well, the way that it was handled last summer for the rec committee is that the, um, cottens are the ones that would go over to the individuals who were smoking and say, you can't smoke here. Um, last year, of course, there was a designated smoking area, and if this policy goes into effect, then there's no smoking, there's no smoking area, anywhere.
That was my answer, and I just thought it should come up for discussion.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, if I change it, I don't care.
No, I think that part should be taken out personally, I think it's going a little bit too far in their personal vehicles. Copy vehicles in different situations, there are personal vehicles, and they pay for those vehicles, they pay the insurance, they, you know.
But if it's during town time, it's our policy.
They shouldn't be there.
It's the town policy that's gonna pay for it if they're in an accident, even if they're in their own personal vehicle, if they're running parks for us. It's not, their, their insurance isn't gonna cover, our policy is, so it's our property, is that verified?
They're all personal vehicles, they're auto, they're automobiles.
I would just say, if somebody thinks they're gonna tell me what I can and can't do in my own vehicle, too, you know, but you know why? I still, I'd still smoke in the car whether in the, if I smoked, I smoked, so.
If anybody, if anybody on the select board was smoking and you were saying on your way to a.
Correct.
A school budget meeting.
Yep.
And you wanted to have a cigarette in your vehicle all the way, but you're gonna be charging for the mileage and stuff for that, for that, you would, that, the way that article reads. Yeah, the way that article reads, you wouldn't be able to smoke in your vehicle, because you're actually doing something officially for the town, using your vehicle, like, if Larry wanted to light up a big stogie while he's over there on the way to the, test the, test the, the water over there at the stream, you know? It, it kinda opens up a lot of avenues, but, and, you know.
Yep, that's a good point.
Well, just table it, ask me to rewrite it, that's all you gotta do.
Well, I think just changing that one sentence is above all, that needs to be done.
Excluding any tobacco use on town property. Get it on the smoker.
So, would be a period after the use of tobacco product is also prohibited in all municipal vehicles?
Yep.
And the rest of it comes off?
Yep, it's a pretty simple cut.
So do you wanna? Anything else?
Nope, that was it, right?
That was the only thing I had an issue with.
Okay.
Alright, alright, we'll fix that and move ahead with that. Alright, so there's nothing else. It is seven-thirty, so it's just the public participation. Now, Dicky, you handed this to me, the public participation. So what are we doing?
That's a good question. I went in today to pay my sixty-dollar personal property tax bill and treasurer says, alright, you know, this has to go to your first bill. I said, I only got one bill.
Yeah.
Oh, no, she says. The one's way back. I said, what bill's way back? I've been paying the same personal property tax for over thirty years, probably forty years. And I looked at it, I got a bill there for four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I said, you know, I've paid my taxes. And I always have. And I'm not, I'm not trying to get out of them. But I'll say one thing. I never received any tax bill, any letter, no, no discussion here, you know, you gotta pay your taxes. Nothing from the town. So I went in there today and found out I was ten years behind in my personal property. Now, it, it started at twenty- ten or twenty-eleven.
Twenty-eleven.
Why did, why did it start there? I go in there every year, I pay half my taxes, and then later in the year I go in, I sit down, I say, what are all my taxes? I want a bill for taxes paid in full. And they figure it all out. And I usually hand them a check. This year I had a little bit of money. I went in just today to pay the personal property. Oh, she said, I have to keep your money for your first bill. I said, you're not getting any money. I'm not paying anything more than the town approved. I'm not gonna give people a lesson on personal property taxes tonight, but I think I could. And something happened. And we're gonna figure it out. And when we figure it out, everybody is gonna know what happened. Maybe it was a mistake, granted.
I know this is personal, it's public participation, but I have the same thing poached to me about my dad's. And I thought, well, that's.
That's what I said. Why should it be me personally? I said, it should happen to somebody else.
My dad's like four or five years prior to my personal property.
Something's wrong. You know, you know.
Yes.
But anyway.
So did you look into that?
I haven't had a chance yet, I.
This is where I figured it could be wrong. And, and this is.
Hope you feel better.
This is figuring if everybody's wrong. Which I never figured that way. If when I went in, I'll say twenty-eleven, the first year of my bill, when it started. I went in and the treasurer for some reason started doing it different and just charging me all my property taxes and left out my, my personal property tax. That would make sense, but why did it start in twenty-eleven? Why did the town never notify me that I owed them taxes until today? So I'm very, I'm very excited over this. Very excited, okay? And, and, and you people can take the time you want to. But she told me, oh, we got nothing on it. We got nothing. Well, you know, if you don't have nothing, I'm not, I'm not gonna pay you. Because it's pretty easy to find something. You can go in there and you've got a computer, it was supposed to solve everybody's problems. It can't count votes, but it solves everybody's problems. You can go in there and look, when I paid the tax, my property taxes, you can calculate the late fees and all this other stuff. You can come out right to the penny on what that was with all my personal property taxes. It wouldn't take too long. Okay, now let's say that happened. Well, something was happening before twenty-eleven differently. So, something's wrong. But the main thing, what bothered me is I never get any notice at all. You know, if you wanna take somebody's property, there is a way that can do it. You haven't done it. There was just a court case in the paper the other day, and, and, and the person won the case. The town was trying to take its property, the judge said, you didn't, you didn't follow.
Did you receive in these past years a bill for personal property?
No, no, sometimes the, the bills, I think, I don't know, I think, this may be the first time, but I can't remember. But the bills, my personal, my personal property was at my house. So I always wrote it, it was always built on that, that receipt, whatever. You know?
It's on the same bill as your, as your home, right?
My, it was my house, yes, yeah. This, this bill came different. It's just came.
It did.
Yeah.
It came differently. Because I came down here and paid my dad's taxes, his property taxes, and then I get that in the mail.
Well, that's okay. You know, you can do it that way. You can do that, that way if you want to, the town. That doesn't bother me.
It should be done differently, I think.
But something's, something's wrong here.
Yeah. Something's.
And it isn't, I hope it isn't just me, but I'm used to that, but.
Were those just mailed out?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you got it a couple of weeks ago. I had to get it with the rest of your, your regular tax bill.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna pay that today when I said, you, you drove a wrong drive.
They should've gone out the same time.
Yeah.
So did you mail these?
Yeah, the personal, the personal property, they both went out at the same time.
I didn't, I didn't go get a printout like that.
Bill going back to twenty- ten or twenty-one.
I would have to go through my father's records.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. I guess we don't, I meant to understand what's going on, so.
Well, I don't understand it either.
So what, this is a bill that didn't go out with your regular tax bills?
Yeah, the personal property.
No, the personal property and the tax bills went out at the same time. I don't know why. You, you didn't get it.
They weren't received at the same time.
I know that I sent them at the same time.
See what my fathers came after. Just like.
Yeah, I don't.
It just was down there two weeks ago. Why do I, you know, what's going on? And then I paid it. And then she said, she called me and left an email and said, did you know that your dad has back taxes from other years? My father just paid his taxes.
I thought I did.
I know this year that the, I, I did. I, I told it every single one of these.
But I want this, however it comes out. I want this, I want this publicly. I don't want this quieted over. I want, I want everybody to know what happened here. But I don't like it.
Right, no, I don't.
And I didn't like the answer I got in that office today.
So is that something that Debbie sent out?
I, I guess so.
Personal property, did that come from, or did Debbie send that out after?
No, the only ones that would've come out late were the ones that came back to us. And I know yours was not one of them.
Well, I don't, I mean, my, my, personal property has been the same for thirty or forty years. So, I mean, I don't get it.
Back during the new, I call it new, during the different people that are working in the office, when they, when they go into the computer system to start printing out, you know, people's home taxes and everything, normally there was a supplemental piece of paper in with people's, you know, property tax. And it was just, the number was actually in with the property tax, but the separate piece of paper explained that the increase was one of them. When they printed them out, the trio program split those, those two up. And because of the, how the information's added, the trio program did not recognize that this, they, it calculated back to when that trio program was last updated, which unfortunately was, I think it was August or September twenty-ten.
About right.
Was when it was upgraded. So it just went back to the last program, which was back then, saying that we never got sixty dollars before. This is sixty dollars now. It must be sixty dollars way back then, too. So it calculated every year. But during those years, it was actually put in with your property tax, added with your property tax with an explanation letter. You know, the sixty dollars was added onto your personal property. If you, if you ever had the personal property tax, Vera would mail it in the same envelope, a separate piece of paper.
Do you know, I mean.
So did your personal property never show up on your tax bills for these years?
I always, no, I got a bill every year.
So it's just a computer catch-up.
I want any more years than that.
And Debbie's just.
Including these years.
Nailing them out, which is the right thing to do. You know, it's just separated this year, unfortunately, for some strange reason.
Getting a separate bill, but why do you go back like you haven't been paid for five, six years?
Doesn't show. Nobody ever said to the computer that it was a separate bill. It was always added into the pers- the people's home taxes, their property tax. So their personal property tax.
So shouldn't the tax bill show extra money sitting there now? Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's all, who's, who's engaging in, in plugging in the numbers? We, we're just doing the whole, they're just going through all the rebounds, stuff like that, so things are gonna be kinda kind of lacking a little bit, but right now, it's separate. That's how it got mailed out. It got mailed out separately. Before it wasn't. It was actually in with one envelope.
Alright, so we're gonna have to call.
Yeah, they were, they were in separate envelopes.
Dicky. If you posted your tax bill from last year, does it show personal property on it?
Yeah.
And you paid it?
Well, I thought I did, but she said I didn't.
Well, the computer, that's a computer, that's a computer mistake.
I'm here. It says other slash personal property. So on the, on the tax form from last year or the year before, does, does it show that sixty dollars?
The same bill.
You can't get that bill again. Whenever I come in for a repeat bill, if I lost it, I get that printout like a second one, yeah. I want that bill.
I always used to give you that.
Get another copy of that?
It's just too long for me to remember, Kathy.
Well, there should be, there should be extra property.
Does it have any personal property on it? Last year, the last bill, did it have your personal property on it separate?
Well, now this is gonna make me wonder how many more are out there. Stop. And if it said anything, I wouldn't have questioned it until I talked to my dad, and then I don't know what's going on.
I can get you the receipts going back forty years. If you look at my receipt, it does say sixty dollars.
You have this bill like from the last year, the last few years.
I don't know if they sent me it separate or they put it in.
Regular tax. We still have it. They backed three, four, five years.
If your personal property is showing up to this, that's what I, I wanted.
Really?
Remember you showed up the other day.
No, I'm, I'm talking about on your actual bill for your property.
The following Tuesday after our meeting there, when I contacted.
The line for other personal properties is listed.
To get out of the, get out of the, the loop. So I'm sure you know now that.
Say last year or two years.
I don't know if she changed.
So I don't get any of those.
Well, Dicky, do you wanna hang on to this?
I have a, I have a question.
You bet.
Sandy, we're gonna have to contact Leanne and see if we can figure this out because if she's got it and she's saying her dad's is like that, I'm just wondering how many more are out there that's gonna come in with a similar issue.
Wendy, did you get one? Yeah, I did, yeah. If people, people that have skitters or tractors.
Does it show that you're behind? Did you look at it? Does it show that you owe money from past years?
You won't.
It won't until she comes in to make payments.
When she comes in, that cash flow will come up. It's not gonna say sixty dollars and then a big added sum at the bottom.
I wrote out a check and I sent it in, and then she said, she emailed me and said. Is Debbie still over there? You know, did you know your dad hasn't paid for? I'm just curious. The only thing that I would think, Dicky, is I, this is the year I would take care of my dad. But my father always paid his taxes, so, you know, I've just been helping him out, so. There should be a credit of sixty dollars. Something's not right, something. I'm curious to see how Wendy.
Even the units of selectmen didn't send out those seven oh six forms. I always get that bill, you, you owe sixty dollars. So I sent it, I paid it, you know?
If you paid it over the past years, I wouldn't worry about it. It sounds to me like a computer glitch.
Yeah.
No, it could be, like I said, somebody who knows computers, I don't know if there is any way in this town. I think what's happened is new package, when they spit them out, they spit two bills out, one for your regular taxes and one for personal property. And then why it showing, showing that you owe back taxes, because apparently you paid it before in the regular tax bill. I think that's what happened.
But technically, that extra money should be sitting, you should have a credit on your.
Now, that's what I think could have happened.
To me, those are the extra.
No, because it was added, Vera had added them in and sent the explanation in the same envelope. A supplemental saying that said, mine was like personal property.
I always come in and ask them, I wanna pay everything right now.
Thirty-something dollars was added to my, to my property tax. And this is why it was, went up twenty and.
Alright.
Maybe I owe it to you. I don't.
Dicky, you owe all kinds. Let's see, what's that? No, we're gonna let some of the others talk.
You know, I went to, I inherited some land in Phillips.
Yeah.
And I went up there and, of course, you think another small town, I don't know where we're solving that. Well, we know they're not. There's an old woman in there, and she says, you gotta come up here in three days. You're gonna lose that house. I said, I wasn't even getting the mail. I just, so I went up, it took me four hours to get that bill there. What a mess. But when she gave me that receipt, anything that was owed on that receipt was on, was, was there. I could go back. So if this had happened in twenty-eleven and I got a receipt from Phillips, I'd say, oh gee, that's missing, it's just sixty dollars. It wouldn't have gone on like this.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Well, I have a sneaky suspicion that it's a computer issue. So, well, we'll.
I hope so.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Right, it could've, a treasurer may have changed something, the way she did something. I don't know.
I think that would look weird once you start looking at all of these.
I think so, too.
You know what you need to do, Linda, go back to your dad's last year's tax bill and look and see if the personal property amount is on his, his building that he had, the, the personal property.
And I can get a duplicate here?
Shouldn't he have to?
She told me, she told me I couldn't get anything. There was nothing here. That's what your treasurer told me. There's nothing here.
Come here, yeah. Don't connect it.
Okay.
Nothing here.
So, Dicky, we're gonna look into this for you.
Alright.
You would probably have the town now. Yes, Kevin.
So anyways, when did the board discover that, that John Dearbacko was already amount approved by the public?
When he had to.
How are we getting money?
That he's gonna absorb it in his budget.
And also, the, how, how long are we gonna keep letting the road department keep creating vehicles and damaging property and is that gonna ultimately affect our insurance? Tammy would probably know the answer to that.
Well, what do you? That's the wrong type of insurance for me. I don't, I don't do property.
So like the town truck, same driver smacks another person, the, the vehicle's now at Tozias getting auto body done. And Brad's, he's a guy, the person involved says, am I sending the bill to the town? And Brad says, no, I'll, I'll take care of that. So where's he getting the money?
Okay, wait a minute. I don't know what you're talking about. I didn't know about the.
Freeman's during the, during the snowstorm.
Oh, well, no, there's more to it than that.
There's more to it than that.
Yes. Did, did he bang you?
Okay, Wendy's is the same, so it's definitely a computer issue.
Debbie's saying it's not.
No, it is. It is. All of you, yeah. There's definitely, Sandy, there's an issue with pro- personal property.
No, don't be in the town or pay the taxes.
My joy is the board went back.
There are a number of years.
Yeah, same here, two thousand bucks. So you know it's a computer problem.
Yeah, it's a, it's just a glitch.
You're not special, Dicky, sorry. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Alright, personal property. Oh, my word. Good night. Okay, so yours is, so Sandy, we've gotta, we've gotta address that because half the town is gonna have a problem about.
I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so there's more to that situation.
Right, but does it affect the town's insurance?
Well, I'm sure that after a while, insurance is gonna do, yeah, we're sure if we have claim after claim, that's going to.
You put in so many claims, I'm sure, yeah.
Can we have details? What happened?
Yeah, there is no details, I don't know. It's, it's, it's in the police hands, I just know there's more to it than what he's saying.
Well, I wasn't coming over with everything, but.
Yeah, what?
Okay, yeah.
I'm just saying, it was an accident, it, it's an accident.
Please tell me what it was reported and later on and.
Well.
Do it if it started.
What vehicle is it?
I don't like the idea that the public knows what's going on, I have no idea and I'm on the board.
Well, and also, I remember a couple of weeks ago, I asked why, if it was a mechanical or an, uh.
No, they clearly don't like it.
Or a driver oversight, why the tire fell off the truck during.
I don't know about that, I, I, I didn't know about that until you said something, and I questioned him after the meeting on that. Um, and they just said it was a. You didn't find the accident, I don't know, I don't, I couldn't tell you why that happened, I didn't even know it had happened until you brought that up.
Well, I think I, so, I just wanted to back and ask for more details.
Yeah, I was just. I, yeah, so, I don't know, I, I, I just know that there's been a few accidents kinda with the same person in seemingly involved in these accidents, and I was curious to know if that's going in his personal file, if there's any reprimand, or, I mean, that's a lot of money.
There is no, there is no reprimand kind of thing going on, I can tell you that.
Unless they find it's at his fault.
And as far as this last accident you're talking about, I, as far as I know, part of the reason why there's not much being said is it's questionable who's at fault, from what I'm understanding. That's where that's left at right now, and so.
So what, was there a urine test conducted after the accident?
On which, on, it was, no, I wouldn't say so.
On a, on a municipal employee driving the vehicle?
No.
Why?
Normally, normally in any accident.
They said the cops weren't called, didn't you say the cops weren't called?
Yeah, we reported after, from what I understand, and the driver didn't, they didn't know nothing about it till the cop come and asked it.
Right.
But then, nobody showed up, that's when it, yeah.
It wasn't reported immediately.
Right.
And the driver of the vehicle for us didn't even know it took place.
Didn't even know it took place, 'cause he was stopped, and I understand that that person hit him in the back, drove into him, so.
Well, yeah, I, the person in the rear has to be in control, so why would it be?
Right. He was stopped.
So I don't, I, I don't know what's gonna, I don't know how that's gonna play out.
Right, I don't know how that will play out.
I guess we need to meet with Kevin afterwards to find out what the hell's going on, because nobody wants to tell us.
I'm just. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking.
That's all the information I have, Kathy, and nobody's saying who it was, what vehicle it was, who hit him, I don't know who was driving.
Brad Finkman was driving his vehicle, Dustin Woods was driving the town truck.
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know which truck it was, I just know it was one of our big trucks, that's all I know, I couldn't tell you which one.
The two thousand and eleven.
Ask Kevin, he knows, I.
Dustin Woods was driving.
Who was in front and who was in back?
We don't know.
Dustin Woods, well, the accident itself.
Our trucks had to have been in front.
I, I heard, I heard that during the plow, when he was plowing, he backed up, and when he was backing up, 'cause he was moving the snowbank to the corner, when he was backing up, he, that Greg was parked, when he was pushing the snow, and then when he was backing up, he backed up in his vehicle. That's kinda, that's the way I heard, that's the way it was told to me, so.
Has Brad sent any of these new employers contract testing?
But, but I, the, my, my thing, well, hold on, my whole, my whole issue is, how is, because he, Greg had asked, you know, do I send the bill to the town? And it seems like Brad was trying to hush it up and say, no, I'm gonna take care of it. So how is he gonna take care, is he gonna put a claim in by himself without you guys knowing, or?
We know about the, the incident.
Well, after. We knew that there was an incident.
Yeah, we knew there was an incident.
We know there was an incident, yeah.
It's going to insurance, I don't know about this whole I'll take care of it kinda thing, I don't know.
No, I don't know about that.
Karen?
When is Leanne Sally coming?
Um, do we have a date for Leanne Sally?
March sixth.
March sixth.
March sixth, right.
What time?
Um, last time she said she'd be here at nine o'clock, I'm assuming it's the same time, I can let you know when I know.
Yeah, thank you.
So he's.
You still have issues?
Yeah.
Yeah, she still has questions, she wanted to meet with her.
Good god, I thought we had you taken care of.
The extra money?
Has she called you?
Is it gonna cost for the backhoe?
Has she called you?
Is that, how, is it gonna get absorbed in this budget or in the next budget?
No.
This one.
When are we gonna get the backhoe?
He said in about a month, I asked him that today.
Cause the, the backhoe we got, he'd be running fine, he was running around today, no problem.
I asked him that.
And the ninety, the ninety-seven blew up.
Yep.
This morning.
Yep.
Rod went through the oil pan.
Rod, we had something go one way and something else go the other.
A piston.
Yeah. Rod came through the oil pan, just went through the head, lack of oil, and that's what Greg Vaughn told me, out of his own mouth.
No.
Nope, I heard, and we heard last year, that the backhoe, he's getting a new one one way or the other, and the truck, new way, one, one way or the other, beating the hell out of it.
He said it, he's gonna run the equipment.
Into the ground.
Into the ground.
Seems, it just seems too much better.
All I can say is we're at a point now.
I mean, we're gonna get a big snowstorm supposedly this week, possibly, and we got a ninety, the, the main truck that we couldn't live without, the ninety-seven, is now in opera.
Well, he's trying to cover it. We're working on it, and as far as the vehicles and whatever, I mean, they need to be replaced, and right now, and now we're at a position where they have to be.
They got them, yeah.
Um, and all I can say is if we don't, if you don't like the performance of the road commissioner, then you get somebody else to run and you vote them out, that's.
I'm just, no, I'm asking about the, the town employees, when's enough enough? He's a town employee, the road commissioner is elected, but the others are town employees, when's enough enough? When, when does the backing into a garage door costing us eight thousand dollars, or banging into a parked car, or whatever the case may be, the, the others, and when's enough enough, when do you tell that person, hey, this is your written notice, one more screw up and you're out of here? When, when does that happen?
Well.
Because anyplace else, I'll tell you why, any private organization, they'd be gone, you stop costing that much money, that many accidents.
We'll give them a raise.
Yeah, yeah, two and a half percent?
Yeah. Yeah.
Again?
We'll talk.
I'd have gone to zero.
Kathy?
This new truck that we're going for, is it a ten wheeler or a six wheeler or?
Six.
Kind of replace whatever we have.
Six. Not gonna be no ten.
I heard, I heard six.
I'm, I, I think that the article that you're taking to special town meeting should be clear on what this new vehicle is going to cost, what it is.
Yeah, well, that's why we asked him to get everything together and get it to us.
It's gonna be a six wheeler, it's not gonna be a ten wheeler. As far as I'm concerned. We don't need it.
That wasn't, that ten wheeler wasn't even brought up today.
No, that wasn't even brought up anyway.
Right.
So is it normal practice that when the town votes money for an article, to, is it normal practice if that money goes over what was voted on, that we just take it out of the budget somewhere?
No, it usually doesn't happen.
Is that even legal for that to happen?
Yeah, because he's making, because he's taking it out of its budget, what wouldn't have been legal is if he would have taken more from surplus.
Well, you are, you're taking away from surplus, 'cause what he, 'cause what the road commissioner doesn't use in his budget goes back to surplus.
Um, yeah, I can look at it that way.
So can I agree that you're actually stealing that from surplus?
I guess you've been looking at it that way.
Do you know the reason he went with the other backhoe?
Cause he couldn't get zero percent interest?
Do you know the reason?
Correct.
Because.
They went, they.
Pay's back out at zero percent interest.
Yeah, they went back.
And John Diaz said they would do zero percent interest.
Yep.
So if you figure it out.
Oh, is that what a trade in?
In the long run.
Yeah.
Okay.
You would be better off.
Yeah, we're not keeping the other one, no.
The other would be traded in.
Yeah.
No, I understood the reason, I, I heard the explanation, but I just was curious if, if that happened.
Yeah, no, we're, and, and I think if, if you looked at it that way, then yes, but that's just not the way it's been looked at. But you know, in the big scheme of thing, you're right, that money's not, not going into surplus now when it would have before, but it's just like, um, like, and I'm gonna say this, even though now I'm gonna get, mm. The three hundred dollars it costs to tow that truck today, 'cause that's what it costs to tow that junk back to the garage, he'll find that in his budget, because his winter budget, we haven't, we're in pretty good shape with that, there's extra money sitting there, he'll pay the tow bill, we're not gonna have to go to surplus to get that, so.
Well, we never gone to surplus like last year, like.
Right. Well, that's right, it's been absorbed into what he's had, so.
I'm just saying that his budget's too high, if he can absorb.
Well, that's kinda my point too, I mean, three, four. All right, now what would happen, if he did have that money, if he had his own surplus together, he didn't even have, you're right about that.
Well, now typically, you wouldn't be able to.
Well, what, what would happen if he would have taken the sixteen thousand five hundred that was originally approved and fixed the backhoe that we, he still doesn't even know what's wrong with it, because he didn't send it out to be fixed, and they're using it like every day.
Well, that's.
No, it's only two wheel drive.
Yeah.
The same.
Yeah, it happens.
I'm sorry.
So, but I wanna give Gail a chance if she's.
And Dicky's issue shouldn't have been brought up in public.
No, it shouldn't have been, that's what's been happening.
Right.
You shouldn't have asked me that.
Gail, did you have something?
Well, I did.
Go ahead.
I wanted a copy of the MMA paper that Carol talked about at the last budget meeting regarding health insurance for elected officials.
I, I don't have that.
And that's what I figured she probably was the only one that had it, and she left, so, I really would like to have a copy of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I really would like to know what came of that, you were gonna give Debbie a letter and.
Carol never got me the information.
So that's.
So nothing's happened with that, with that yet.
About the.
Nothing's been said, no. I've still got my little sticky with all my notes on it, but it hasn't gone any further than that.
Um, and I should have asked to be on the agenda too, but I didn't, I didn't realize you were gonna go off to the, um, budget. Um, Belle Child has resigned from the finance committee.
Okay.
So that leaves two openings on there, 'cause Constantine resigned.
Yep.
Although he's not really on it, and Belle resigned, I just wanted to know, there's two openings.
Okay.
And we, are we gonna have time as a finance committee to make a recommendation on the, for the special town meeting, for the truck?
Yes.
We need a finance committee meeting anyway, and I was hoping to do it next week, so maybe we could do it at the same time. Is that?
Well, I'm just trying to think, we have to do, we have to, well, but we'll approve the article and make our recommendation Monday.
Is that what you're doing at five o'clock?
Yep. Um, we have to post, but we better post it by the six.
Six.
Six. When are you planning on meeting, the fifth?
Who, us?
Yeah.
I, I hadn't really set a meeting, but I was thinking the third or the fifth.
Well, if you wanted to meet the third after us, 'cause the Thursday's Monday, you know, that's February, jeez, um, hold on.
Monday is the second.
Okay, so if you met the third or the fourth, yes, you can make your recommendation, because we can wait until the fifth's posted, yeah.
Then I'll try to get that meeting.
Yeah.
What day exactly? It's either Tuesday or Wednesday. The third? The third or Tuesday. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm, just let me know. Oh, I will let you know, I'll send you an email.
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't, my other questions were dollar amounts on some of those articles.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna get a copy.
Yes, I'm gonna, yes, I'll give you one.
I'll just give you that.
Yep.
And, you know, I was sitting here thinking, when you were talking about those bills that like Dicky got and your dad, I don't have the warrant with me, it was either fifteen or sixteen, there was a, a mailing of eighty things that went out. And it was a question I was gonna ask you at a selectmen's meeting, and I forgot to bring the warrant, what were those eighty things that went out? I think liens? Well, that's what I wondered, if they were liens or if they were these things that, that these guys were getting.
Yes.
They were probably liens.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't personal, personal property.
It wasn't, it was probably liens then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what happened with that, because I, I, I know they were, they were separate, but they should have gone together. They went from here to there.
Well, that's not even the issue, the issue is that it's generated a bill for the past eight years, that's.
I don't know. Yeah.
That's the issue.
It's, it's a simple, I mean, this is.
Yep. And, and the email that I didn't, one year was partially paid, she said, I don't know why this was.
They should have gotten it, that's why I'm coming.
Yeah, well, my father would not partially pay.
I think you probably.
Anything else, Gail?
No, I don't think so, thank you.
Okay, anybody else real quick?
Got one more quick one?
Okay, yep.
Did I hear you say, Rickell, that, that if all of these articles passed at the mill rate, the town would not go up?
Our portion of it, I can't guarantee the school. But as far as us driving up the mill rate, we would come in the same as we did this year.
But you're looking to exceed LD one? But you're looking to exceed LD one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't get that, how are we exceeding LD one and not having to increase the mill rate?
Because LD run, one doesn't tie into the mill rate.
Doesn't come into county tax or Medicare.
County tax doesn't, that's right, county tax is separate, that's right.
Or Medicare or anything like that, if you add all that.
No, our mill.
I mean, our, your controllable portion.
Is not gonna raise the mill rate, that's correct, the only thing, if, the only thing that'll drive our mill rate up will be that school budget again.
Or Medicare going union.
Well, that's already doubled, so.
That's right, we've already doubled up.
So how is that, with all these added expenses, I can't understand, we can buy a new backhoe, we can buy a new backhoe, new truck, double the Medicare.
Because we, because we did some cutting also.
Cause a note.
A lot of the articles were cut.
Yeah, we did a lot of cutting, plus we, we cut, we cut Brad's part-time person, we cut him down to twenty hours a week, those ten hours add up. We cut the deputy physician quite a few hours, she's down to like twelve hours a week. We've cut out most of their stipends, the, the, um, Brad and Debbie's insurance stipends in half, so we've done quite a, and, and we, what, some of Debbie's stuff, we just said, well, she wants twenty, we're giving her fifteen, cause she can't tell us what the twenties for. So, I mean, we did quite a bit of cutting.
It just seems, yeah, I understand, I, I worked, we were going all through that, I understood those, but it just didn't seem to add up, like, the truck payment, the backhoe payment and the Medicare alone is over a hundred grand.
Yep.
In one, one year of it.
Yep.
So you're saying you cut a hundred grand out of it, so it's a.
But see, you're doing the same thing I was, and I just, I swear to God, I was sitting down at that end of the table today, and, cause I've been on the phone with, we've been with Main Revenue Service, we've been with MMA asking questions, Sammy and I have been going around with this since last week. And just finally today, I'm sitting down and plugging the numbers in, I was like, oh my God, and the light bulb finally went off and I've been on this board, what, this is my fourth, fifth year, I don't even know.